In Hillsborough County, your tap water is more than just convenient. It's safe, trusted, and affordable. Every drop is monitored 24 hours a day and tested regularly to meet strict state and federal standards, so you can trust what's coming out of your tap. Skip the plastic water bottles and go with tap. That way, you're choosing sustainability and savings. Hillsborough County Water Resources is proud to deliver quality on tap. For helpful tips and for more information, visit hcfl.gov/qualityontap.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' October 16, 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the transmittal and adoption of text and map amendments to the comprehensive plan. The Board will also consider related applications for rezoning concurrent with applications for future land use amendments. Before I go any further, I do want to read into the record from Commissioner Josh Wurstel. Please be advised that I'll be traveling this week from October 14 through October 17, and will attend the BOCC meeting public hearing virtually. So Commissioner Wurstel will be online virtually. At this time, the applicant for application CPA 25-11, CPA 25-12, and RZ MM 25-0808 has requested a continuance of these three related items to the end of this evening's hearing. Quit laughing, please. Agenda due to the applicant representative also attending a public hearing at the City of Tampa this evening. So can we have a motion just to continue this until the last item of the CPA agenda?
Move for approval.
Second Commissioner Miller, Second Commissioner Bowles, please record your vote.
Yes. Motion carried six to zero.
Okay. Now request the Planning Commission staff introduce the first item on this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Good evening, commissioners. Our first item is Item A1, which is the fiscal year 26 to 31 CIS Schedule of Projects, which will be presented by Erica Larson. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is Erica Larson, Planning Commission staff. This item is the Planning Commission's review of the Hillsborough County's Capital Improvement Section, CIS Schedule of Projects update. This is an action item. Chapter 163 requires that the schedule of projects, or the list of projects addressing level of service and adopted in the comprehensive plan, be updated on an annual basis. The update would replace existing CIS schedule in the comprehensive plan with the schedule listed in your packets. The latest schedule reflects the adopted CIP that were recently approved. The update is accomplished by ordinance, which is explicitly permitted under Chapter 163. This is a routine annual update. We come before you each year with this information to support the ordinance. County staff identified projects in the CIS that affect level service. These items make up the schedule of projects. There was a recent Chapter 163 update last year that also requires the CIS to include Basin Management Action Plan, BMAP, projects to be updated annually. BMAP is a framework for water quality restoration that includes a comprehensive set of solutions to achieve the pollutant reductions established by a total maximum daily load, TMDL, as defined by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. These BMAP projects were coordinated with county staff from the Environmental Services Division. Additionally, the plans of other agencies are incorporated. Displayed is a summary of the CIS Schedule of Projects, which are placed into five program areas. Transportation, which includes sidewalks, bridges, and other pedestrian enhancements; solid waste, water enterprise, stormwater, and parks. You can see the largest groups in terms of funding are transportation and water enterprise. The total funding amount for fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 31 is $4.26 billion for 200 projects. I'm sorry, $4.25. The following graphic displays level of service priorities for the CIS Schedule of Projects. 1.4 billion, 32% are eliminating deficiency. 961 million, 23% are maintaining level of service. 1.9 billion, 45% are future growth projects, and 4.5 million, less than 1%, is eliminating deficiency and future growth. The breakdown of level of service project types identified by the county is consistent with the level of service priorities outlined in CIS Policy 1.1.8. On this slide, you will see three objective and policy excerpts used in the consistency review. However, a full list of policies used can be found in your packet. The first policy was discussed in the previous slide, CIS Policy 1.1.8. The project funding should first be expended on projects that maintain level of service and correct deficiencies before being expended on projects that serve future growth. The flu objective listed discusses infrastructure location and directs infrastructure and facilities to the urban service area. Staff found 47% of overall projects are within the USA. Several large projects that are intended to serve both urban service area and rural area population are technically located in the rural area, so that's why there's a large financial amount in the rural area. The comprehensive plan also has a CIS objective regarding the coastal high hazard area and limiting public expenditures for infrastructure and facilities within it. After review, staff found that projects within the CHHA were minimal and were either to serve existing development, repair or replacement, or enhance public access to natural areas. 26 projects are within the CHHA. And Planning Commission met on August 11 and found the fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 30 CIS schedule consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and recommends adoption by ordinance. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, as well as county staff are available as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. We have two individuals that have signed up this evening. Each person will be given three minutes. Both are virtual. First speaker is Nancy Pataraki.
She did not check in.
Okay. How about Edward Schwartz?
Edward, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, this is Ed Schwartz. I think that I am... Killer issue, I was calling for the issue with the parcel on Van Dyke and Tobacco Road.
Okay. We'll put you on that. I'll identify you on that when that item comes up. Thank you, sir. All right. This time, we'll go into board discussion. Commissioner Wurstel?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just real briefly, for our colleagues' purposes, going through this, I noticed that on some of the items, particularly ones I'm most interested in, which is our annual road maintenance and repaving CIP project and our sidewalk maintenance project, I noticed that the amount of money projected for those from 27 to 30 stayed flat. So I brought that to the attention of the county administrator and the offices of management and budget, and they agreed that, in light of the fact that we have approved revenue sources with projections, that they're going to begin projecting how much money we can from a planning perspective be allocated into those, just for a visual aid for next year's. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so can we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right. This is a motion from Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, on the ordinance for fiscal year 26 through 31 CIS Schedule of Projects. Please record your vote.
Yes. Motion carried seven to zero.
Next item?
Yes, sir. The next item we have is Item A2, which will be presented by Gillian Massey. Thank you.
Good evening. Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. This evening, I'll be presenting on HCCPA 24-43, which is 7351 Muk Pond Road. This request is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment. It's made up of three parcels that total approximately 19.1 acres. The request is to change the land use designation of these parcels from residential one to light industrial planned. The location of this plan amendment request is in the eastern portion of unincorporated county. It was originally part of the October 2024 cycle of plan amendment requests. It's in the rural area and within the limits of the Tenota Sasa Community Plan. This is an aerial photo of the site, outlined in pink. It's located south of Muk Pond Road, northwest of Interstate 4 and McIntosh Road. Within the vicinity of the site, there are single-family residential and agricultural uses to the north, light and heavy commercial to the east and south of Interstate 4, and there's agricultural uses to the west. This photo is facing south on Muk Pond Road towards the subject site. This is facing southeast on Muk Pond Road, where there's agricultural lands west of the site. This is some of the single-family residential across the street from the site, which is facing north on Muk Pond Road. This is the intersection of McIntosh and Muk Pond Road. This is some more single-family residential within the vicinity of the site. This is an example of the light commercial located to the northeast of the site. Further east of the site, you'll see Camping World, where there's RV sales, east of McIntosh Road. This is the I-4 ramp, which is east of the site, where there's light commercial. And this is south of the I-4, where there's also light commercial. The site is located in the residential one future land use category. It allows for consideration of low-density residential, rural-scale neighborhood commercial, office, multipurpose projects. Neighborhood commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. Surrounding land use categories include residential one to the northeast and west. Suburban mixed-use six and public quasi-public is located to the south of Interstate 4. There's one subdivision further southwest of the site with a designation of residential six. And the blue line in the southwest portion of the map indicates the existing urban service area boundary. The request is to change the site to light industrial planned, which allows for consideration of uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as the predominant uses, including support offices, warehousing, and rural-scale retail uses pursuant to locational criteria. There is no residential allowed under this category. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, under residential one, the site can be considered for up to 19 dwelling units or approximately 208,000 square feet of non-residential uses, subject to locational criteria. The change to light industrial planned would allow for consideration... would not allow for consideration of residential uses, but would allow for up to approximately 624,000 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will increase the potential of commercial intensity and eliminate residential uses, and also introduce light industrial uses. The request was sent out to our commenting agencies for review, and there were no objections that were received. Planning Commission reviewed the request for consistency with the comprehensive plan on April 14 and found it to be consistent with several objectives and policies. Objective 1.3 and Policy 1.3.1 of the future land use section discuss urban expansion areas and planning for areas that are currently in the rural area that will transition to a suburban or urban development pattern over the timeframe covered by this plan. The site is located within the area that is part of the ongoing urban service area expansion study in the I-4 corridor, which was directed by the Board. Furthermore, the Planning Commission found that the request is consistent with Objective 2.2 and Policy 2.2.1 of the future land use section, which are related to allowable uses and intensities within the land use categories. It was found that the proposed use was allowable within the light industrial planned category and is consistent with the surrounding land use pattern, particularly to the south of the intersection of Interstate 4. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. Isabel Albert with Hough North Ashleigh Drive, representing the applicant. I think the staff did an excellent job with the presentation, and we're here with my team if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, and we had one individual signed up, Alexandra Swart, virtually. Is Ms. Swart on the line?
Yes. Hello.
Good evening.
Hello. Yes. My name is Alexandra Swart, and my husband and I live in Dover, Florida, just a few feet from the area in question. My husband and I, as well as our fellow neighbors, have extreme concerns about the proposed change for many of the reasons indicated in the staff report made back in April. This area is family-oriented in nature, and the land parcel immediately adjacent to the area in question actually currently holds cows, donkeys, et cetera. Past meetings to address this parcel of land, it seems that the applicant disregarded and arguably scoffed at the existing plans for the mere reason that it was established some time ago, and this is very disheartening to hear, as my husband and I and many of the members of our community made home purchases in this area specifically because of its rural character and suitability for families as described in current plans. Though this amendment, we believe, will just serve to add noise pollution in general and traffic to the area, all of which bring hazards to the residents, particularly the many children living near feet from this site, if this change is successful. I know at the zoning master's hearing, the traffic expert addressing this area of land noted that, although in his opinion, the traffic volume of the proposed warehouse use that would be permitted under the light industrial planned use is comparable to that of the existing approved use. He noted that he did not actually make a comparison for the purposes of that traffic study, and to be candid, the traffic concerns are one of our chief concerns for all of the residents here. The existing area has extreme traffic issues and traffic concerns, and making this amendment will only just add to that problem. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal, if they'd like to say anything. Good evening.
Commissioners, good evening. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. We heard everything that the opposition just said. I believe those are more zoning matters than comp plan at this point. We'd be happy to talk about traffic and circulation at that time, but I think right now we're just focused on the land use.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote on this item will occur after the oral argument for the major mod. So at this time, anyone that's going to speak to Major Modification 25-0025, if you'd please stand so the clerk can swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. Staff, want to introduce the item?
Commissioners, the next item is again Item A3. This is concurrent major mod application 25-0025. It's a request for a major modification to a plan development that, as noted, is located on the south side of Muk Pond Road, west of the intersection of McIntosh Road and Muk Pond Road, and also north of I-4. The request is for a major modification to modify the PD, which is currently approved for 154,000 square foot RV facility, to allow for a maximum of 249,000 square feet of warehouse located in three buildings. Also, as part of this request pursuant to regulations in the Land Development Code, the applicant is also requesting to extend water and wastewater lines in the rural area in accordance with the criteria outlined in the Land Development Code. Based on the site plan, proposed buffer and screening proposed, DAF does find the request compatible, and also with the understanding of the concurrent light industrial planned comprehensive plan category proposed for the site. Staff also, based on review of the criteria in the Land Development Code for the extension and review comments received from Water Resources and Economic Development Department, staff is also supportive of the extension of the utilities, and therefore, staff is recommending approval. The hearing officer also recommended approval, but Planning Commission did find this inconsistent. I believe focused on the issues regarding the wastewater and water connections. Staff's available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, come forward.
Good evening. Isabel Albert with Hough, representing the applicant. Again, staff did a very good job presenting the application. We're here with my team if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, there's no proponent testimony. We have one individual that signed up for opponent testimony, and that's Ms. Swart again. Ms. Swart, you still on the line?
Yes, I'm here. I mean, I would just reiterate my original concern, though I don't really have anything further to add. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do you need rebuttal? You're good. Okay. Planning Commission?
Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. The subject site is currently designated as residential one. However, the rezoning was reviewed for consistency under the assumption that light industrial plan is adopted. It's in the rural area and within the limits of the Tenota Sasa Community Plan. The request is consistent with future land use section, Objective 2.2 and Objective 4.4 as it relates to permitted uses and compatibility with the surrounding land use pattern. The applicant has proposed a use that can be considered in the light industrial planned future land use category, and has implemented mitigative measures and site planning techniques to address compatibility. The applicant is proposing to extend public water and super lines from the nearest available connection point to the site. One Water, Objective 4.3 explicitly limits public potable water and wastewater lines in the rural area, except under specific conditions. This is a fundamental part of the comprehensive plan's strategy regarding utilities for land use planning, fiscal sustainability, and infrastructure planning. The applicant is requesting an exception to this under One Water Policy 4.3.5A, indicating the project meets the criteria of overriding public interest. The primary intent of this policy is for unique circumstances, such as publicly funded activities or projects. It also states the exception will be considered only in limited cases. Thus, any exceptions citing overriding public interest necessitate an inherently high standard of review. Although the project may provide some economic benefit, there was not sufficient evidence provided that the exception to the longstanding utility policy is necessary for a reason of overriding public interest. Specifically, the request did not meet the criteria number three or number four under the policy. And based on the request not meeting this policy for water and wastewater, Planning Commission staff has found that the major modification is inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master reviewed the applicant's request for a major modification to the existing plan development zoning to allow up to 249,100 square feet of warehouse and distribution uses and 2,250 square feet of associated structures for electrical and fire pump facilities. The applicant is proposing a maximum building height of 40 feet with a parapet wall feature extending higher than the roof, approximately 6 feet 6 inches. The applicant is proposing a building setback of 180 feet and stormwater ponds along Muk Pond Road to the north. The zoning hearing master noted that the concurrent future land use map amendment, CPA 24-43, to designate the subject property as light industrial planned, is supported by the Planning Commission. The zoning hearing master noted that Development Services staff supports the application, and Transportation Review staff had no objections. The zoning hearing master concluded with a recommendation of approval of the request for a major modification to the plan development.
Okay. I don't see anyone in the queue, so can we have a motion on HCCPA 24-43?
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Myers.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cohen. This is an ordinance for adoption of HCCPA 24-43. Please record your vote.
Yes. Motion carried seven to zero.
Can we have a motion for Major Mod 25-0025?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Bowles, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Yes. Motion carried seven to zero.
Next item?
With the movement of A4 to A6 to the end of the agenda, this brings us to Item B1, which are the transmittal items. Item B1 is HCCPA 25-16, which will be presented by Diego Guerra. Thank you.
Gentlemen, Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This item is Hillsborough County's Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2516, Surface Water Resource Protection Areas and the Wellhead Resource Protection Areas Maps Updates. This is a publicly initiated amendment of two maps within the Future Land Use Map series. Although it is a map amendment, the request is processed as a text amendment. The applicant requests to update the Surface Water Resource Protection Areas map, which includes the Hillsborough River, Alafire River, and the tributaries of Tampa Bypass Canal. Furthermore, the request also includes the Wellhead Resource Protection Areas map, which includes the redefinition of the Zone 2 area and removal of Zone 1 areas. I'm going to start off with a little bit of a background. The Wellhead Resource Protection Areas was established in 1992. In 2004, additional safeguards were introduced by ordinance, which included the Surface Water Resource Protection Areas. Resource Protection Areas and the inclusion of the Zone 1, which protects future supplies, and the Zone 2, which protects existing supplies. The Zone 1 is depicted on the currently adopted map on the right side of the slide by the red transparent areas along the northern seam of the county and then on the eastern center seam of the county. The Zone 2 are depicted by the green squares around the wells that are distributed throughout the county. The Wellhead Resource Protection Area inclusion requirements define that a well must be publicly owned and produce to or equal than, I'm sorry, must produce equal to or greater than 100,000 gallons per day. Additionally, it must be connected to a potable water supply system that's publicly owned. Based on the current science and technology, the applicant is proposing to redefine the Zone 2 delineated areas to provide an additional 500-foot buffer around the cones of contribution as depicted on the proposed map on the right-hand side of the slide. The Zone 1 area has not met its purpose or intent since its establishment in 2004, and the applicant is proposing it be eliminated. And as I mentioned, both of these changes are reflected on the slide, on the map on the slide. For the Surface Water Resource Protection Areas, the designation protects surface water drinking sources, which include the Alafia River, the Hillsborough River, their tributaries, and portions of the Bypass Canal. The protection zone is along the primary reaches of the rivers and include the 100-year floodplain in addition to a 200-foot buffer. This includes the tributaries and surface waters that are hydrologically connected at the surface based on the 100-year floodplain, which is produced by FEMA through their firm maps. For the Tampa Bypass Canal, the protection zone extends 1,000 feet from the outside edge of the bank to the opposite bank, 1,000 feet beyond the outside edge. These protection areas are depicted on the currently adopted map shown on the slide to the right. As I previously mentioned, the Surface Water Resource Protection Areas were created based on the FEMA firm maps, and with the recent updates to those maps by FEMA, they have shown that floodplains have expanded, contracted, and exhibited perennial changes to perennial flow. The proposed map shown on the right side depicts these updates to the Surface Water Resource Protection Area and named tributaries that are directly connected to the Hillsborough River or Alafia River upstream of the potable water intakes. Ladies and gentlemen, at its 13th October public hearing, the Planning Commission found the proposed plan amendment consistent with One Water Policies that discuss the protection of surface and groundwater for current and future use, environmental sustainability objectives that recognize the Hillsborough River as a major source of drinking water and calls for its protection, and intergovernmental coordination policy that encourages the coordination with local, regional, and state agencies. Because this public hearing, the Planning Commission public hearing occurred on 13 October, a couple days ago, a signed resolution is included as part of, separate from your packet, your locations. And we also recommend the plan amendment be transmitted for further review. This concludes my presentation. However, the applicant does have a presentation of their own.
Can I blow up that for you? You got it, yeah, you got it.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kim Cruz with Hillsborough County Environmental Services Division, environmental supervisor of the Wellhead and Surface Water Resource Protection Program and Phosphate Management. My experience includes approximately 12 years working at DEP prior to Hillsborough County and various environmental compliance programs and some permitting. Today, we present to you the updates, proposed updates to the Wellhead and Surface Water Protection Program maps. So first, to go into a little background, the county is required to delineate or identify public potable supply wells, public potable water supply wells, within the county and adopt Land Development Code regulations to implement those maps. The county's first adoption was 1992, and the state of Florida adopted their first wellhead protection rule in 1995, and EPA approved the state of Florida's rule in 1998. And after it was approved, the county did amend the wellhead protections to include two zones instead of one for wellhead protection, the surface water protection area as well, and a potable water wellfield protection area. Today, we're here to discuss the Surface Water Resource Protection Areas and Wellhead Resource Protection Areas. The Surface Water and Wellhead Protection Areas are designed to protect specific Safe Drinking Water Act systems. And this is for the protection of public potable water supplies. This does not apply to private wells or other smaller drinking water systems. So I know Diego went a little bit into detail about these requirements. Their public potable water supply wells connected to public water systems for wellhead resource protection areas, and they have to have a water use permit of 100,000 gallons per day or more through the Southwest Florida Water Management District. The Surface Water Protection Areas are upstream of the treatment plant intake structures along the Hillsborough River, Alafia River, Tampa Bay Bypass Canal, and tributaries to both Staff has been working with Tampa Bay Water and the Southwest Florida Water Management District along the way through this entire process. We identified potable water supply wells across the county and ASR well, aquifer storage and recovery injection wells that meet the criteria for public potable water supplies. These areas around the public potable water supply wells are based on a 10-year travel time, which were determined to give some degree of protection from identified sources of potential groundwater contamination. With the data collected from Tampa Bay Water and Southwest Florida Water Management District, we hired a third-party consultant to conduct hydrologic modeling using the same models used by Southwest Florida Water Management District, Tampa Bay Water, and the United States Geological Survey, which is federally recognized model. Depicted on the left is the current Wellhead Resource Protection Area map. The red polygons are Wellhead Resource Protection Zone 1, which was designed to protect future sources of public potable water supply wells, and green polygons, which are a little difficult to see here, but they're surrounding the cones of contribution identified in the various colors that look oval or circular in shape. And those green areas were our protection areas for current existing public potable The model that was, one of the models that was used accounts for climate, head transmispicity, hydraulic conductivity, and stresses that may induce vertical movement as well. On the right is the proposed Wellhead Resource Protection Map update. This map includes a hydrologic modeling that was conducted using the models that I explained in the previous slide, plus an additional 500-foot buffer to add extra protections. For Wellhead Resource Protection Area Zone 1, we did research, and we did coordinate with Tampa Bay Water and discovered that there have been no new public potable water supply wells added to Zone 1 area for 21 years since the adoption of the WERPA Zone 1. So Hillsborough County staff is recommending removal of WERPA Zone 1 because it no longer serves its intended purpose. And the modeling that we used for this update is more advanced than what was used 21 years For the Surface Water Resource Protection Area map updates, we reviewed the FEMA 100-year floodplain, upgrading it from the drinking water, the surface water drinking water intake structures, and the tributaries to both rivers that flow predominantly year-round. And we discover that some changes were needed. Some updates were needed. So the current map is located on the left, and the proposed map is located on the right. With these map updates, we are proposing a separate, we did submit a separate application to update the Land Development Code, to consolidate the protection zones for the Wellhead Resource Protection Area from one zone, from two zones to one zone, provide clarity, and to change the review frequency from two years to five years to align with Tampa Bay Water's updates, and also to add future sources out of review cycle. The new wells that have been, public potable water supply wells that have been added to the map in the past, which are very few, were located outside the current WERPA Zone 1. So additionally, Environmental Services Division, we hosted two open houses, a virtual engagement for two weeks, and we did receive public comments. We've read each and every public comment, and we even hosted a one-on-one meeting to discuss concerns, to answer questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. We have one individual that signed up to speak this evening, Melissa Nordbeck.
Due to the current political environment and the erosion of home rule, now is not the time to remove Zone 1 protections from thousands of acres. Zone 1 was created to protect sources of future drinking water for public utilities, not private wells. It restricts high-intensity and high-density land uses. For example, no industrial rezoning is allowed. No landfills, no underground storage, no interim wastewater treatment plants, and septic tanks are required to have one acre of upland. You can develop and build on these properties. It is not a restricted use, if it is not a restricted use. You can build houses and businesses. The restriction of one septic tank per acre and no interim wastewater treatment plant ensures lower density, and the restriction of no industrial uses ensures less intensive uses to protect groundwater. The change to the map is based on a study that states Tampa Bay Water has not identified new groundwater supplies for public utility or issued new pumping permits in the last 21 years, and that preserving these areas for future wellfields is no longer necessary. The last review of the map was in 2021. Still, no permits have been issued, yet no update was recommended. But now, after the 2025 review, the map must be updated to exclude Zone 1 throughout the entire county. Why the sudden urgency? Keystone will be the most affected by these changes. We have the largest acreage currently within the Wellhead Protection Zone 1. SB 180 and Live Local have tied the hands of local government and planning agencies. If you remove any protections or change the existing map, you will not be able to add them back. As proven by the lack of an update in 2021, there is no urgent need to update the map. Now, Zone 1 can be brought back for discussion in the future when there is more local control. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else has signed up to speak. I don't see anyone in the queue. I know that the, I know that the modeling now is much more advanced than it was in the past. Do you have any, does staff have any concerns with this item?
No concerns. We believe that this is an appropriate update to the map based on more current information and focusing the regulations where they'll serve their intended purpose. No concerns at all.
Okay. Commissioner Bowles?
To address the question or the statement that there was an update provided in '21, and we did not, we, the board, did not do anything at that time, was there a specific reason why there was staved off or why four years later, now we're doing it? I mean, I don't think the technology has increased that greatly in the last four years. I would say certainly over the last 20 years, but I'm just curious if there's some particular reason that you can...
I believe the last update was a site-specific update based on a focused area. The update that's before the board today is an area-wide study, and that was not done for the '21 update. It was a site-specific.
So this is a much more broader view, looking at the entire area versus a small segment of the area, which gives a different perspective, different lens.
Yes, sir. It's comprehensive.
Okay, can we have a motion to transmit CPA 25-16?
Move approval.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item.
This brings us to item B2, which is HC CPA 25-17, which will be presented by Katrina Corcoran. Thank you.
Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. I'm here tonight to present on HC CPA 25-17. This is a text amendment to the corridor preservation plan map and text of the mobility section. Some background on this request, it is a privately initiated text amendment that would be adding a corridor, Fort Hamner Road, to the adopted corridor preservation plan map. This map has historically been updated by the county, making this a unique amendment. And with that, there's a staff-recommended policy addition to the mobility section's corridor preservation plan policies. I'll be discussing that in more detail later on in this presentation. This slide shows the corridor preservation plan map, and the mobility section's map series includes map 1, which is this adopted corridor preservation plan map. This map is utilized to protect future right-of-way from encroachment, provide connectivity, and ensure transportation corridors are adequate to serve planned growth and development patterns as defined in the Future Land Use Section. The map identifies the number of additional lanes needed on existing corridors or for new roadway connections needed to serve future growth. It also shows intersections and interchanges identified for either grade separation or reconfiguration. In coordination with the Land Development Code, the corridor preservation plan map is utilized to establish setbacks for development and provide clarity about development potential within future right-of-way. This slide shows the applicant's proposed changes with Fort Hamner Road and its proposed alignment. I'll note that it starts at US 41, going through I-75 to the Hillsborough County line. It is located in South Hillsborough County, and the roadway is currently not constructed. It is outside of the coastal high-hazard area and the urban service area. Within the Manatee County Comprehensive Plans map series, Fort Hamner Road is shown as a proposed four and eventually six-lane roadway from US 301 to the Hillsborough County line, so there is that potential connectivity there. The roadway would be located within a group of 36 parcels under the control of one owner. The properties where the alignment would occur are currently utilized for agriculture with a future land use designation of agricultural/rule. There are no proposed changes to the future land use designations for these parcels as a part of this amendment. Finally, Fort Hamner Road is a potential future connection to propose Fort Hamner Road interchange at I-75. The potential interchange is not a part of this amendment process and will not be reflected on the corridor preservation plan map at this time. This slide shows the Little Manatee South Community Plan boundary and urban expansion area UEA study boundary. The roadway alignment is within the Little Manatee South Community Plan, pictured here on the left. It is also within the study boundary for the UEA study. This study will assess land use, infrastructure needs, and community character to develop recommendations for future planning decisions. Finally, the applicant has noted and provided documentation of significant growth and entitlements within Manatee County south of the Hillsborough County line. You can see that noted here with the development on this applicant-provided map. I'd also like to note that this roadway is not within the coastal high-hazard area, although some of the property is within the coastal hazard area. That's something that came up with the Planning Commission. That's something that came up with the Planning Commission. This slide shows the corridor preservation plan map with the applicant's proposed addition of Fort Hamner Road. You can see it located here, labeled and circled. And since that's pretty small, this slide shows a more zoomed-in look on the proposed Fort Hamner Road. You'll note that the corridor is orange, which indicates that it could be a maximum of up to six lanes. The Planning Commission received comments from the following agencies that are listed on this slide. For the purposes of time, I'll not be going through every comment received in detail. Those are available in your packet, and instead focusing on the comments received that are most relevant to existing conditions in the area as well as staff analysis. I note that Hillsborough County Public Schools did not have any objection or comment, and with that, I will be moving on to the Transportation Planning Organization comments. This slide shows the TPO's long-range transportation plan unfunded needs. The proposed Fort Hamner Road interchange is listed in the long-range transportation plan as an unfunded need, which you can see here with the snippet of the chart and the map here as well. The TPO noted that the potential interchange received a $7.5 million legislative earmark in 2025 for a study to determine its alignment with final approval from the Florida Department of Transportation. It is staff's understanding that Hillsborough County has been working on a future update of the corridor preservation plan map, which will include an interchange in this area consistent with the TPO's LRTP. The comprehensive plan directs that the corridor preservation plan map be updated in line with the LRTP to address growth and mobility needs of the county. The proposed Fort Hamner Road is not within the LRTP, but it does serve as a proposed connection to this potential interchange. This slide shows the wetlands that are present near the proposed roadway alignment. Just to orient you to this, this is US 41, this is I-75, and this is the Hillsborough County line. The proposed alignment is primarily north of the wetlands, however, they are present in the area. The Environmental Protection Commission noted in an agency comments that the proposed alignment could present considerable permitting challenges due to the wetlands in its mapped path. They recommend that the corridor be shifted to avoid wetland impacts. Additionally, their comments noted that a wetland delineation survey is necessary to verify the avoidance of wetland impacts for the proposed roadway, and this must be approved prior to any permitting or construction in the area. Protecting, enhancing, and mitigating environmental impacts are important considerations that are noted throughout the plan. It requires coordination with the EPC to protect and ensure no net loss of ecological values provided by wetlands. Staff are noting these comments to explain existing environmental conditions in the area. However, the EPC's comments in the plan's policies do not directly prohibit roadway construction in this area, and it's not a basis for inconsistency in itself. Additionally, because the roadway is currently not constructed and no engineering or design of the final alignment has been completed, it is staff's understanding that the roadway's configuration could be shifted in line with the EPC's comments and with the LDC's regulations without needing to adjust the line on the corridor preservation plan map. Finally, final engineering and approval of the construction and alignment of the proposed roadway would occur outside of the comprehensive plan amendment process. This slide shows significant wildlife habitat near the proposed alignment. Again, this is US 41, I-75, and the Hillsborough County line. The proposed alignment occurs primarily north of the significant wildlife habitat. According to agency comments received from Conservation and Environmental Lands Management, the agency has no objection to this amendment, subject to the condition that proposed roadway provide wildlife crossings where it traverses Curiosity Creek and Wildcat Creek. The comprehensive plan states that wildlife corridors should be protected or enhanced with designated crossings for the passage of wildlife. Again, these issues would best be addressed through the roadway engineering and design process. And now that I've gone through agency comments and existing conditions, we do have a few policies here, objectives and policies within the comp plan that this request is consistent with, starting with Little Manatee South Community Plan. Again, the proposed roadway is within the Little Manatee South Community Plan, and that plan's vision statement discusses the potential for future roads and specifically supports regional connectivity to a potential future I-75 interchange. While an objective of the community plan is to maintain conservation areas, it also anticipates growth through urban service expansion. This is a unique consideration that differentiates the Little Manatee South Community Plan from other rural community plans. Additionally, the community plan recognizes the importance of enhancing infrastructure and interconnectivity provided by roadways. Next up, you'll see Intergovernmental Coordination Section policies. These listed here discuss coordination with other jurisdictions, and as noted previously, Fort Hamner Road is considered as a potential connection to the extension of Fort Hamner Road in North Manatee County. These policies encourage coordination with other jurisdictions for the purposes of having common methodologies for measuring impacts on transportation facilities, and coordination on infrastructure management and needs between jurisdictions. Next, you'll see the mobility section policies. These are portions of the corridor preservation plan policies. The corridor preservation plan is utilized to protect future right-of-way from encroachment and to provide connectivity. And the proposed Fort Hamner Road is not within the LRTP, but it does serve as that proposed connection to the potential interchange. Finally, you'll note the future land use section and capital improvement section policies listed here. The plan does support the provision of infrastructure needed for growth and development. This slide shows other related policies, the majority of which we've already discussed. They include the environmental and sustainability policies, as well as the Intergovernmental Coordination policies. These really speak to the EPC's comments and making sure that we're mitigating and protecting wetlands. The Little Manatee South Community Plan also does reiterate the environmental aspects. The mobility section policies also speak to that, but what I'd like to draw your attention to is that they also speak to future land use and projecting future transportation needs. The properties where the alignment would occur have a future land use designation of agricultural slash rule. However, again, this area is being studied as a potential UEA to accommodate population and job growth. UEAs are publicly initiated, and historically, the corridor preservation plan has been utilized for public right-of-way planning. This amendment to the corridor preservation plan map is a private applicant with a proposed alignment located within parcels under the control of one owner. This presents a unique circumstance that is not contemplated under the current comprehensive plan policies, where a private landowner may want to plan for long-range infrastructure to support development in an area. The adopted mobility section policies were written from the perspective of the corridor preservation plan map being updated by the county. However, the plan also supports the provision of infrastructure needed for growth and development, and it specifically mentions this within UEAs. With that, there is a staff-proposed addition to the comprehensive plan's corridor preservation plan policies. This is Proposed Mobility Section Policy 4.2.6. It reads to enable infrastructure planning to occur concurrently with or in advance of the adoption of urban expansion areas, as outlined in the future land use section. Preliminary planning efforts may include, but are not limited to, updates to the corridor preservation plan map and/or the LRTP. The intent of this policy is to recognize that additional infrastructure could be required within and necessary for the UEAs, and that these initial planning efforts may occur prior to the finalized recommendation of UEA studies. Staff have coordinated this language with the private applicant, and they are comfortable with staff's recommendation for including it within the amendment. With that, the Planning Commission found that HCCPA 25-17 was consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, with the addition of Proposed Mobility Section Policy 4.2.6. In addition to the proposed policy, the plan's support of necessary infrastructure for growth, coordination with neighboring jurisdictions, and the recognition of potential urban services and an interchange within a rural community plan support the addition of Fort Hamner Road to the corridor preservation plan map. I'd also like to note that this was heard by the Planning Commission this past Monday, and a signed resolution has been provided to you. That concludes my presentation. I believe the applicant also has a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions after theirs. Thank you.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. One second, please. I got it. Before I start, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that Katrina Corcoran, your staff presenter just a moment ago, and your entire staff have been unusually accessible and responsive to us. We work in 12 jurisdictions, mostly in southwest Florida, and we have not dealt with a local government jurisdiction as easy to work with, notwithstanding that they've asked us tough questions, but we've liked your staff, and we're glad to be here before you today. Mr. Chairman, my name is Pat Neal. I'm CEO of the Neal Communities. I'm here with my son and partner, John Neal, and six planning, legal, and transportation professionals who are listed here. Over the past 55 years, our Neal team has built about 124 residential communities, and we've completed them, mostly master-planned communities in five counties: Manatee, Sarasota, Charlotte, Lee, and Kellier. Also Pinellas, Bay Gulf, and some other counties, but not in Hillsborough County for a number of years. We currently work in 12 jurisdictions, south of Hillsborough County all the way to Cape Romano, which is, of course, Naples. We've built about 25,000 homes in Manatee County Bradenton, roughly one in every eight homes standing there. Of our homes, we have never had a home built by Neal that has flooded during hurricanes, and, as I often say, we build a lawyer-proof roof and lawyer-proof stucco. There are two elements of our experience in this application which may be unusual for you to hear, and I guess I'll just go ahead and say them. Typically, and always, at least since 2007, we've built infrastructure adjacent or along or near our properties. Here's a bridge that we've built. I guess I have to say, we moved the sawtooth swordfish, found its actual habitat 80 miles from this property and got it eliminated from the core stopping point. We measured every boat on the Manatee River and lowered the bridge by 12 feet. We changed it to a post-and-beam type structure to a segmented box girder. We had two fundraisers for congressmen from different states who had funding responsibilities for it, and we got the state to loan the county $42 million. We've done 10 of these projects so far. We've proven to Manatee, Sarasota, and Charlotte County that we can almost always build cheaper and faster. Typically, we build at 55% to 60% of the typical county bids. We have one project, Bay Street in Sarasota, that we build at 26% of the engineer's estimated cost. Second, we currently build homes from $278,000 and are the most prolific builder of affordable single-family for-sale homes in our region. We may build the infrastructure with the project that we're proposing. We hope that we can have a chance to work with Hillsborough County with public-private partnerships or public-public partnerships, where at the very beginning of a planning process. I have to my right Katie Labarre, who will describe our corridor presentation plan. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Katie Labarre. I'm an AICP certified planner with Stantec. I'm here representing First State Property Group. And as you know, the request before you tonight is to amend the corridor preservation plan map to add an alignment for a future six-lane corridor that will extend from the Manatee County line to US 41 in southern Hillsborough County. This is a unique application because the entire corridor is planned on property that's under single ownership. The pastel colors on the map represent approved developments in northern Manatee County. The existing and proposed roadway network provides a regional benefit to the 29,000 households that are anticipated in Manatee County, and will also serve future communities here in Hillsborough County. This request is timely because the evaluation of the urban service expansion area is underway for Little Manatee South, and planning for regional infrastructure and connectivity early is an important and important part of long-range planning. An interchange is also proposed at I-75 and Fort Hamner Road. While this isn't the subject of this application, it's going to be an important regional connection. And I'll also note that the Interstate Justification Report and Project Development and Environment Study will kick off in the next week or so for that interchange. The Fort Hamner Road extension in Hillsborough County will represent nearly 32 miles of public roadway that connects from US 41 to Bee Ridge Road in Sarasota. The segment in Hillsborough County will be approximately 4 and 1/2 miles of that entire segment. There's historically been a significant lack of east-west mobility from US 41 and the county, between US 41 and Interstate 75 in south Hillsborough County. The extension of Fort Hamner Road will open up that, that, that interconnectivity significantly and will provide for meaningful connection. To date, regional coordination has been critical to the implementation of this roadway corridor in terms of planning, permitting, and construction of different segments along the way. We've worked closely with the transportation planning organizations, Hillsborough, Manatee, and Sarasota Counties, as well as the Florida Department of Transportation. The last segment of Fort Hamner Road in northern Manatee County, which actually connects to the county line, will be constructed in the next two years. Evacuation from all hazards is a critical component as the county considers expansion of the roadway network. This map shows the existing statewide hurricane evacuation routes, and you can see that extending Fort Hamner Road will support regional evacuation of vulnerable populations along the coast and low-lying inland areas. With Fort Hamner Road, residents can choose to use or bypass interstate and find a number of alternative routes to, to the center of the state. Families aren't focused on jurisdictional boundaries. They're focused on getting to and from work and meeting their daily needs. Expansion of this roadway network aims to connect existing and future communities. Regional corridor planning in this matter, in this manner, rather, is forward-thinking and will support the creation of jobs, economic diversification, and vitality in southern Hillsborough County. The amendment is consistent with the Little Manatee South Community Plan and supports a multimodal network that will provide regional connectivity. This project furthers and enhances the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, and the policies that are on this slide are just a few that support this request. And finally, we've reviewed the proposed policy that staff presented, and we fully support the inclusion of this comprehensive plan, of this policy into the comprehensive plan, and we applaud staff for considering solutions that, that make sense. We respectfully ask that you transmit this request to the Department of Commerce. We have a team of experts who are here and available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, however, no one has signed up to speak to this item, so going to board discussion. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You all did a beautiful job presenting all of the details on this project, and it honestly just speaks to me that this is exactly the type of beautiful planning that we need for future growth in Hillsborough County, and with that, I move for approval.
Second, we got a vote to transmit CPA 25-17. Commissioner Miller, second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, I noted the speaker, the senator, said that he was building things at a significant reduced cost, and his time in the legislature might have proved to him that bipartisan agreements are difficult, but one bipartisan agreement he's going to find in Hillsborough is that Hillsborough County notoriously builds roads very slow and very expensive compared to everyone else, so any insights he could offer to us on that would be greatly welcome. Thank you.
Well said, Commissioner Winstall. Okay, with that, no one else is in the queue. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now, can we have a resolution for transmission on both CPAs?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Next item.
Yes, sir. This brings us back to the adoption items. So the first two items that we'll hear, items A4 and 5, they'll be presented together. HCCPA's 25, 11, and 12 will be presented by Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 25, 11, located at 16, I'm sorry, 6720 Van Dyke Road for the urban service area expansion. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 21.73 acres. The applicant is requesting to expand the urban service area. This amendment is associated with HCCPA 25, 12, a request to change the future land use category from residential 1 to residential 12. This is the general location map. As I mentioned in the last slide, this is associated with HCCPA 25, 12. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. It is located south of Van Dyke Road and west of Suncoast Parkway. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. Now, we have some photos. This is facing the subject site. Here's looking across Van Dyke Road. Subject site is behind the camera. This is facing west from the subject site, on the left side, I'm sorry, on the left side of the photo. And this is facing east, situated to the right. The Veterans Expressway is in the view. Now, as far as impacts, the proposed amendment would bring 21.73 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connection to public water and sewer. area, requiring at a minimum connection to public water and sewer. Now, we have agency comments. The fire rescue department commented that the proposed changes to this land use would have an impact on the Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, as additional dwellings would increase call volumes and response would require the department to add an additional unit to the Van Dyke Road Fire Station 34. The community and infrastructure planning department commented that, based on the traffic analysis and information provided by the applicant, there is not adequate capacity to accommodate the additional generated trips by the proposed future land use designation of residential 12. This assumes that all the 2045 cost feasible improvements will be constructed. Now, as far as consistency review, the proposed amendment is inconsistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. The proposal does not meet the intent of future land use section, objective 4.4, and policy 4.4.1, that require new development to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In this case, the surrounding land use pattern is comprised mostly of single-family residential uses to the west and south of the site. According to future land use section policy 3.1.2, gradual transitions of intensity and densities between different land use, land use uses shall be provided for as new development is proposed through the use of professional site planning, buffering and screening techniques, and through the control of specific land uses. The residential 1 future land use designation surrounds a site, which is a future land use category focused on low-density residential at one dwelling unit per gross acre. Also, the Keystone Odessa Community Plan desires to retain its rural residential character as an area of lakes, agricultural activity, and homes built on varied lot sizes and in a scattered development pattern. Rural design guidelines were developed to implement the Keystone Odessa Community Plan in order to retain the rural residential character. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And now, I'll go on to 2512.
That's the correct one? Okay. Keep going.
Good evening again, Commissioners, Alexis Myers Planning Commission staff. Here to present HCCPA 2512 located at 6720 Van Dyke Road. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 12.79 acres. The applicant is requesting the change of future land use category from residential 1 to residential 12. Okay, this is the general location map. This amendment is associated with HCCPA 2511 to expand the urban service area and is in a rural area and within the limits of the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. This is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. Surrounding uses include agricultural uses to the north, single-family uses to the west and south, and light commercial uses to the east. Now, we have some pictures again. This is facing the subject site. This is looking across Van Dyke Road. Here is facing west, and then this is facing east. Currently, the future land use category is residential 1. The residential 1 category allows for the consideration of agricultural, farms, ranches, residential, neighborhood, commercial, offices, and multipurpose projects. Commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. The applicant is requesting the change of future land use category from residential 1 to residential 12. The res 12 category allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood, commercial, and multipurpose projects and mixed-use development. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under res 1, the site could consider up to 12 dwelling units or 139,283 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use category of res 12, the site could consider 153 dwelling units or 278,566 square feet of non-residential uses. During the rezoning process, commercial locational criteria may affect the allowable square footage for potential non-residential development. The proposed amendment will result in the increase in development potential by allowing higher commercial intensity and residential density. Now, we have some agency comments. There's the same as other amendment, where the fire rescue commented that there would have to have an additional unit to Van Dyke Road Fire Station 34, along with the community and infrastructure planning department, which commented that, based on the traffic analysis, there is not adequate capacity to accommodate for the additional generated trips. The proposal is consistent with future land use section, objective 1.2, and its associated policies regarding rural area development expectations. It is also inconsistent with objective 3.1 and its associated policies relating to compatibility. It is also, also does not meet the intent of future land use section, objective 4.4, and policy 4.4.1, that require new development to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. As such, it is inconsistent with the Keystone Odessa Community Plan, which desires to retain its rural density, I'm sorry, rural residential density as an area of lakes, agricultural activities, and homes built on a varied lot sizes and in a scattered development pattern. With that, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2511 and 2512. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The applicant come forward.
Jake Kramer with Barbas Kramer, 2002 West Cleveland Street. This is, this is an odd application, I'll admit, because the real question you're being asked tonight is, is it better to have an ownership opportunity for some townhomes? Would that be a better transition than apartments or a large commercial center over 100,000 square feet? That's the question you're, you're being asked tonight in these three applications. So as staff said, this is off of Van Dyke Road, and there's, there's three applications. You have comp plan amendment, USA expansion, and rezoning. The only reason that the urban service boundary that we're asking to expand that is, is again, to provide an ownership opportunity through townhomes, and I'll explain that shortly in the presentation. So again, the question is, we've got, and in fairness to Planning Commission staff, they don't get to look at this in this stage. They don't get to look at what is the zoning. They're just looking at the map, right? And so, the question is, is 110,000 square feet of commercial right next to a residential community better than what we're proposing? We think 127 for-sale townhomes would have less light, less noise, and it'd be a better transitional use in this area. So we're requesting a category that is the same as what's just across the Suncoast. You can see all of the townhomes, you can see all of the apartments just across the Suncoast on the, on the other side. And the orange color here on this map, I thought was, I thought this map was pretty interesting because the orange color is multifamily. So there is multifamily in this area. This is not a rural area. It is suburban. I agree, it is transitioning toward rural, but this, this is really not a rural area. This is our proposed expansion of the urban service boundary. Again, I, look, I agree that it does look a little bit odd, the shape, but it's really form over substance, and here's why. We're in, the property's in the water service area of the county now. Property's in the wastewater service area. You can see most of the properties surrounding us. Most of, most of the properties owners around us already have the benefit of being connected to county utilities. And this property, in, in the board's good judgment, decades ago, the board said this property must connect to utilities. So, so that's already something that this property owner is committed to because the board had said many years ago that that needed to occur. The only reason, again, that we're asking for this expansion is there's, there's this odd nuance in, in the one-water section of the comp plan. And essentially, the way it works is, we're vested to utilities to one connection. So if, if we wanted to build a rental community and just have one master meter, we could do that. We wouldn't have to ask for the expansion. We're asking for the expansion because we've talked to the neighbors, and the feedback we got was that the ownership opportunity was better. So we want to individually meter those properties. The PD plan, I won't get into now, but I just want you to note, we've got another hearing coming up on the zoning. We'll talk more about this, but I just wanted you to get a taste of it for now and for the public as well. We, look, we realize we're in the Keystone Plan. We realize there's a lot of rural areas in Keystone, but this is not one of them. This, this property is very unique. This property is on the periphery of the Keystone Plan, and it was permitted and approved for commercial many years ago, actually, before this plan came into existence. So this property has this bundle of vested rights, and we're only talking 13 acres of about 22,000 overall for the, for the Keystone Plan. So we're not talking about setting precedent. If anything, I would argue the county has already set the precedent in this area with the pretty massive investment in public utilities, right? I saw, you saw the water, you saw the wastewater. The county's already made those investments, and the county is preparing very soon to make another massive investment in this neighborhood in, in, in expanding, expanding Van Dyke, both capacity improvements to the east and a multi-use trail going west. So, so the county's sort of doubling down, and then $138 million doesn't sound like to me that the county is planning on at least this particular parcel being rural. So that, that concludes our comp plan part of the presentation. Again, you're going to hear a lot more about the details of the townhomes, how we worked with staff to make sure we're protecting the rural heritage of the area. We have done that. We'll talk about that in our zoning presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And we'll have a combined public hearing for both A4 and A5. Five individuals signed up this evening. Michael Beam is first. Please come forward, sir, followed by Melissa Nordbeck, and then Beth White. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I arrived late, and I was not administered an oath. If you, you wish to swear me in before I give my testimony?
I don't believe you need to be sworn in for this. For the major mod, you will need to be.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. My name's Michael Beam. I live at 6401 Thoroughbred Loop in Van Dyke Farms, Odessa, Florida. I live in the neighborhood immediately adjacent to this proposed project. I oppose these comprehensive plan amendments because they are wholly inconsistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Keystone Odessa Comprehensive Plan. The points that I would argue are set forth adequately and very specifically within the staff analysis of the Planning Commission staff report that you have in your packets, and I would urge you to look at those because every one of those points that says it's inconsistent is another reason why these should be denied. Mr. Kramer indicated on behalf of the proponent that, well, we're just on the periphery of Keystone. We're just on the edge. If I live on the Rio Grande and I'm on the US side, I'm still a citizen. It doesn't matter that I'm right on the edge. And just because we're on the edge doesn't mean that our neighborhood should be degraded with this type of development that's going to increase the traffic, that's going to delay service times, that's going to require interim sewage treatment plant because of the increased density. Going from R1, one home per acre, to R12, 12 per acre, is not consistent anyway. There is no transition. That's just hitting a brick wall. That's a big change. Mr. Kramer says that you can see the apartments just across the Suncoast. My home is one of the first in the development. I am one of the homes that's closest to Van Dyke Road. I can see the property from my front yard. I can't see those apartments on the other side. By the way, those apartments are not in the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. They're in loots, and they're subject to that community's plan. So that's not a fair comparison to say that, well, if the area is the same. It's not subject to the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. And again, I reiterate that the, the staff analysis in the, from the Planning Commission very well sets forth what I would argue, so I won't take up further time arguing that point, so I would urge you to consider those and not to approve these amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Melissa Nordbeck, followed by Beth White.
Good evening, Melissa Nordbeck. The USA expansion and the map amendment were found inconsistent by the Planning Commission. Keystone does not have an urban future land use designation, and it has not been identified as an urban expansion area to direct growth. Res 12 is not compatible with the existing development pattern, and there are no town home communities in Keystone. This applicant states this is an infill project, which is not applicable in rural areas, and even goes as far as to claim that this parcel is not in the rural portion of Keystone. All of Keystone is rural. There are cattle across the street from this property, cattle, horses, goats, and sheep down Tobacco Road. The applicant also states they are offering a new housing type, townhomes. Obviously, a new housing type is not like or compatible. The applicant also mentioned vested rights several times. The last application for extension of vested rights was 2015. Due to the current political environment and the erosion of home rule, it is in the best interest of commissioners to uphold existing comp plans and codes. You should be cautious when considering requests for comp plan amendments and USA expansions to increase allowable uses or densities because you increase the risk of the other property owners to demand the same. You should avoid starting a chain of events that appear to open the door to development of a rural community. There is already an additional USA expansion and rezoning request in Keystone. The expressway is the USA boundary. This property is on the rural side of the expressway. Please vote down this expansion and incompatible res 12 zoning and protect the Keystone community.
Next speaker is Edward Shortz, who's virtual. Beth?
I'm so eager. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Beth White on behalf of the Keystone Civic Association. Since these applications are intertwined, we ask that you deny both. Planning Commission has found both of the urban expansion applications inconsistent with the county's comprehensive plan. There's a concurrent rezoning for the 12.79 acres of 6720 Van Dyke Road, the hayfield. There is no modification application for the remaining 8.94 acres, which currently host a business complex and considerable wetlands on the property off of Tobacco Road. Section 18, Section 252-422 of the Florida statutes includes a provision that would prevent any local government in Florida from adopting any amendment that would be deemed more restrictive or burdensome to its comprehensive plan, along with its land development regulations and procedures. These urban expansions are both restrictive and burdensome to the livable community's element of our comprehensive plan, namely, the Keystone Odessa Community Plan, which was adopted to protect our area from suburban and urban sprawl. And while the 12-plus acres off of Van Dyke are vested for utilities, the Van Dyke wastewater treatment plant is at capacity. A condition of approval for the major modification on the hayfield is an interim wastewater treatment plant, which is specified to be placed on a wellhead protection zone, a potable water New interim wastewater treatment plants are permitted only within the designed urban service areas, so denial of these urban expansions would protect our drinking water and deter a live local project. There's another, there's this current major modification just about a mile away on Van Dyke Road. The Shell Station has been told they have to wait until utilities are available before they build a 6,200-square-foot building. And at the November 13, 2024 Board of County Commissioner meeting, CIP 69684198 for resurfacing of Tobacco Road was pulled from the consent agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Winstall, as the cost had ballooned from the estimate of almost 3.5 million to over 6.25 million. the cost had ballooned from the estimate of almost 3.5 million to over 6.6 million. This CIP is still on the books. I'm not sure the cost of materials now, especially with the tariffs, I'm sure they've gone up. The residents of Tobacco Road worked with the prior BOCC to install speed humps to stop traffic on this country road. So are the taxpayers on the hook?
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Edward Schwartz, are you still on the line, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I've lived on Van Dyke Farms since 1997, raised two commercial children here, have enjoyed the area. It's a beautiful area. But about 15 years ago, shall we say, I noticed that Van Dyke Road traffic is doubling, doubling, tripling. Right now, it is at a very high capacity. As a matter of fact, it backs up when you're going especially from the east to the west, from the St. Joseph Hospital all the way to the expressway. It also backs up sometimes all the way on the east, going eastbound from the west, it will back up close. So by putting the multi-development units in that area, you're expanding probably another 200, 250 cars if that subdivision is completely pulled out. So the traffic is just very, very restrictive. It denigrates the quality of life, certainly. And we were told many years ago, many years ago, I believe by the Commissioner himself, that relief was on the way for the expansion of Van Dyke Farms. It did not happen for this, which I'm about right now would greatly devalue the area. And it's not part of the plan, too. That's the other folks from Keystone so eloquently explain the beauty of rural here. And living in the first house in the subdivision, like Michael Beam said, we cannot see over the expressway. It blocks everything. So there's no way that the gentleman who's representing the developer says that we can see those apartments that are in loots, not in Keystone-Odessa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Final speaker, Dave Moore. Is Mr. Moore online?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm David Moore. I live at 17310 Carriage Way in Van Dyke Farms, Odessa, Florida. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Van Dyke Farms Homeowners Association. I'm the current president. As Commissioners know, this has been, you know, a long process. This is the second proposed development that's been looked at over the last two years for this property, and we've interacted with your staff and the Commission, invoiced our concerns all the way through. Our major concern is simple. It, you know, if all of this was controlled by Hillsborough County in Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plans, you know, I think we wouldn't necessarily be concerned. But with the passage of the Live Local Act by the legislature, and then the amendments that went into effect this summer, we are very concerned that if, what the alternatives are, and those alternatives will not have the same level of county approval process as what's being proposed now. So in an ideal world, we'd love to see this stay at the Hayfield as it's been for the last, you know, 30 or 35 years, or, you know, just single-family residential. But in light of the threat that's out there, that something much worse, as was proposed before, 330 units instead of 127 units under the Live Local Act, you know, we're supportive of these changes being considered. And maybe if you could ask staff to address the issue of, you know, you can't bring into consideration in your analysis a threat from the Live Local Act, but if you were to do that, is that a real threat or not? With that, I'll finish my comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll hold off on discussion of CPA 2511 and CPA 2512 until after oral argument on the major modification. So at this time, if anyone is going to speak to the major modification, please stand for the clerk and swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, staff, introduce the item.
Commissioners, the next item is General Item A6 is the concurrent zoning modification, major mod application 25-0808. Again, this is a modification to the portion of the planned development that's located the southwest corner of Van Dyke Road and Tobacco Road. The parcel is currently permitted within the PD for 110,000 square feet of commercial uses. The applicant is proposing in three different development scenarios, 127 townhomes. The three development scenarios are dealing with the number and location of access points on Tobacco Road. That's why they provided three options, provide for three different access options to Tobacco Road. Staff is reviewing this based on the proposed RES 12 plan category and the expansion of the urban service area. Based on that and the surrounding development pattern and approved uses in the PD, staff does find the request for 127 townhomes compatible with the surrounding area and is recommending approval. Planning Mission found it consistent, and the hearing officer recommended approval when staff's available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Advocate, come forward.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, Jake Kramer with Barbara Kramer. I'm going to go ahead and bring up our land use planner to walk you through the site plan and some of the accommodations we worked through with staff on this.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Smith, Director of Development and Zoning for Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100. As staff had indicated, this is a current PD. It's approved for single-family residential and 110,000 square feet of commercial at the corner of Van Dyke and Tobacco Road. The PD plan that we've proposed, or the site plan that we proposed, does have three options. The only difference between the options is that we have two access point option on Tobacco, we have two single-point access on Tobacco. And essentially, the options on Tobacco Road to have one or just a single access provides us the opportunity to break up the number of buildings into smaller unit masses so that no building in the development would be greater than six units of townhomes. Again, we're talking about 127 townhomes at a density of 9.93 units per acre, 35 feet in height, your typical townhome development. Looking at the compatibility on this site, this graph, it just places two blocks on it and gives you an idea from the property boundaries, the nearest residential structures. As you can see, not surprisingly, to the northwest, it's 1,400 feet within Van Dyke Farms. The closest subdivision is 303 feet across the entrance to Van Dyke, 247 feet, which I believe may be the gentleman that spoke's home, 400 feet across wetland conservation area, 444 feet also across wetland conservation, and then down Tobacco Road, it's 1,160 feet. Just to clarify, this application does not include the office complex across Tobacco Road. That's stained zone PD as it is for the office complex that it is today. It's just included in the comp plan amendment because it's in the urban service. It has water and sewer. So we were making those contiguous changes. No land use changes proposed for that property. So looking at the building configuration, we configured them, again, to have no buildings with more than six units in it. We provided buffers along the western boundary, which are not required under the code. We've also provided for additional buffering and screening along Van Dyke and Tobacco Road to provide for better separation. We've also committed to design features, working with staff to have banding on the windows, trying to break up the linear backs of those buildings. And so when you look at this from a design standpoint, window banding shutters on Tobacco Road, it provides for a better character of residential development. I think that the critical element that's really underlines all the amendments is the fact that we have 110,000 square feet of commercial that's allowed. We have amendments to provide an option to provide 127 townhomes, and this is also an alternative to having an LLA apartment complex here. But only looking at the commercial aspect of it, to the townhomes, if you develop the commercial out there, people are worried about traffic, we have 15,000 less trips per day coming out of the townhome project than we would have coming out of a commercial project. So there's a significant reduction in impact. Not arguing the fact that there's a lot of traffic on Van Dyke. Van Dyke is a heavily traveled road. It connects Pinellas County to northern Hillsborough County, and it's probably used by more people in Pinellas than it's used in Hillsborough County to get back and forth. So looking at staff's findings, staff has found that it matches proposed development and transitions, provides for a mix of uses, provides for a proposed development option that would view less intense than the improved commercial option. And based upon these findings, staff has recommended approval, and so has the hearing master. I mean, I think in overall, my planning opinion, this is very unique. The uniqueness of it, it already has intensity. It is at the edge of Keystone. The only reason the Planning Commission found it inconsistent is because they had to use the Keystone Plan and the policies in effect that say we don't want any more intense development. What we're saying is this does not create precedent, is near an urban corridor, it's by an expressway interchange, and that beyond this, you're not going to find another one like this that will be coming forward to change what Keystone is today. I'm here for any questions. I'll turn it back over to Jake.
Thanks, David. Jake Kramer again. So Commissioners, we did have a community engagement session. It was very robust. It was very well attended. Look, as you can imagine, there were a lot of people that came and said, hey, we don't want anything to be built here. And I understand that. But what we wanted to tell them is you have to think about the opportunity here to have something less intense. And one of the comments that I heard at the community meeting was, well, in some ways, this is almost like asking for a downzoning. I mean, when you look at the traffic difference of what we're proposing, I think it is a downzoning is what we're asking for, for the townhomes. And, you know, as Mr. Moore said, the legislation has changed, and so this isn't a threat. This is just the reality. The site now qualifies under state law that was taken out of all of our hands, and the site does qualify for Live Local. You all probably remember this. This was a site that was eligible for Live Local, and then that opportunity went away. But, look, the landowner wants this for the community. The landowner wants townhomes. They've spent a lot of time working with the community, spent a lot of time working with the Planning Commission, and we think, he thinks leaving the legacy of townhomes is ultimately the better fit for the area. So again, as Mr. Moore said, you know, ultimately, I think that's why we got the support of the most affected neighborhood, 423 homes right next door. And, you know, again, this is a transitioning area. I would agree that it gets, there are rural areas very close to this, but when you're sandwiched between 423 homes and the Suncoast Expressway, that doesn't feel rural to me, right? And so it's a transitioning area, and all we're asking is that our vested rights be acknowledged and so that we can provide this opportunity for ownership in this area, just like all these good folks who live next door. So with that, our engineers here, our traffic consultants here, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them and appreciate your support tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First going to proponent testimony. Mr. Moore, are you still on the line? Did you want to add anything here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing more than, again, I'd like you, if you could ask your staff, you know, not, we know that it's already be commercial as an alternative, but again, if it's eligible to be a Live Local Act and this goes away, we're very concerned about that. I will add one other thing. I think that Lenny Scler presented a map that showed, you know, we have a very robust wetland system that separates the homes to the south of this parcel from our community. That includes Mr. Beam's house also. Of course, you'll be able to see it when you drive out of the subdivision, but that robust wetlands will obstruct the view to this property. Also, we do have houses to the west that will see these, this development. However, one of the things we worked with the owner was to put, have them move their storeboard retention pond near our entrance to add a visual buffer. So when you turn in this Van Dyke Farms subdivision, it's a beautiful entrance, we have an existing storeboard pond to the west of the entrance. There would be another storeboard pond now to the east of the entrance, entrance to ease the aesthetic value or to enhance the aesthetic value. So just those two comments. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Going to opponent testimony. You have a total of 10 minutes. I'm just going to call the names in the order they signed up, but you do not need to go in this order. Michael Beam, Melissa Nordbeck, and Beth White. Just please be mindful of the other folks that also want to speak.
Good evening, Melissa Nordbeck. The recommendation of approval for this modification is based on the assumption that the accompanying USA expansion has already been granted, even though it was found inconsistent by the Planning Commission. Also, the recommendation for approval is because the application does not have to comply with the Keystone Community Plan, even though the MAP amendment was found inconsistent. This property contains wetlands. It is in a wetland wellhead protection area, well, not anymore, on a scenic corridor and is adjacent to ELAP. Fire rescue has commented they do not have the resources to support 127 townhomes. The major modification to the gas station less than a mile down the road is on hold. They cannot add more square footage because there is no capacity for wastewater, yet you are expected to approve a townhouse development. This application should have an asterisk by the school impact fees. The high school is overcapacity, so the developer will have to write a check to the school board to allow them to build. Florida statute then requires the developer to get 100% of that money back. And because the developer paid for those seats, the new students get to go to the closest school, and the existing students will be required to switch schools. The Van Dyke community just fought a redistricting, and they don't want another one. The commercial development option requires minimum setbacks on all four sides. They will not be able to have more than 25% of those setbacks as paved parking, and they will not be able to start construements have started. Those all go away with the townhouse option. It is glaringly obvious, a townhome development does not belong here and benefits no one but the property owner and the developer. The comment cards from the community reflect the majority of residents do not want this in Keystone.
Thank you.
Michael Beam, Van Dyke Farms. Mr. Moore's comments, to the extent that they are in support of the project, should be limited to his opinions as a homeowner of Van Dyke Farms and not as president of the HOA. He does not speak for me. The HOA does not own my property. I do. The HOA doesn't pay my taxes. I do. The HOA doesn't pay my mortgage. I do. And the HOA is not going to compensate me for any diminishment in the value of my property when this project goes forward, if it's approved. Now, Mr. Smith told the Commission that there are three options for the property. He only discussed two. This property is already zoned, R1. The same owner that has this property developed Van Dyke Farms at one home per acre years ago. They can develop this parcel at one home per acre, and that's perfectly within its current use approval. So it's not going to render it useless to deny these amendments and this major modification. The property can still be used and can still be consistent. The property can still be used and can still be consistent if it's developed in that manner. Live Local is not before this board tonight, and any suggestion by Mr. Kramer that that is a worse alternative should be disregarded because it's not before the board. The application for that project was withdrawn previously, and to bring it up and then say, oh, that's not a threat, is disingenuous at best, and I resent that. The commission should only consider what's before it for determination tonight. I will yield the balance of my time to my neighbors, and I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, sir.
Beth White, on behalf of KCA. This application should be remanded back to the zoning hearing for review for failure to provide correct and complete supporting materials. Lack of documentation, incorrect data, public participation, and any and all changes made after the hearing could alter their decision. Changes to this application were made Friday, August 15th, after the allotted public cutoff for correspondence in order to be included as part of the record of the zoning hearing held on Monday, August 18th. The changes included correcting a Schrader's error, clarifying the buffering and screening, removing a redundant condition, and clarifying that the project does not have to be gated. On October 1st, after the August 18th zoning hearing, another change was made. Extend the existing 195-foot eastbound to south left turn lane to extend the existing 195-foot westbound to south left turn lane on Van Dyke Road. The zoning master lists Ruskin as the community plan on the first page of their consistency finding. The application has three options for this modification, but the trip generation analysis provided to the hearing master only addresses two traffic studies completed. As I noted in my previous presentation regarding urban expansions, county utilities are at capacity. The following condition to be incorporated in the PD is a new interim wastewater treatment plant located within the wellhead resource protection area, our source of drinking water. This should deeply concern our two commissioners who sit on the Tampa Bay Water Board. This is like the Billy Mays of applications. It needs approval of urban expansions, and wait, there's more. It needs an interim wastewater treatment plant, numerous variances, road alignment, turn lane extensions, and yet more and more pages of additional conditions. Please deny this application. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, did you sign up to speak for this hearing?
No, I took the oath, though I thought it was open. No?
Do you have to be a party of record?
What is your name, ma'am?
Karen Potter. I'm a teacher. I've spoken before.
Did you speak during the zoning hearing master meeting?
I spoke online two sessions ago.
At the zoning hearing master meeting?
I don't know specifically which it was. I accidentally kept interrupting, sorry, online, because I was turned on my mic. But I have spoken before. Karen Potter.
Did you receive a mailed notice of the hearing?
I think so, yes.
I don't see you on the notice list either, which would have made you a party of...
It was not the past meeting, but the prior meeting, two meetings ago.
Was it at the planning commission hearing?
I don't know. Mr. Hagan was there. Everybody here was there, especially the guy that was on the video chat that's not here tonight. I was doing it from home.
Hi, Joanna, is she on the...
Do not have her...
Is she a party of record? No, she's not a party of record. I'm sorry, ma'am, we have to follow the policies.
Okay.
Thank you. How about Mr. Schwartz? Is he a party of record?
Yes, hi.
Hold on, sir.
Yes, as far as all the...
Yes.
Yes, okay, please go ahead.
Yes, I am?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, yes, here I am, I'm sorry. The other thing that really hasn't been mentioned, too, is with the amount of cars that would be coming out of Tobacco Road, and the amount of cars that are coming from the west towards the expressway, there would have to be multiple lights and multiple lane expansion to accommodate all that. I don't believe any of that is currently on the books, as far as I know. Can anyone in the commission address that? If all the lights and the different lanes and the expansion of the road would be done at the same time, that this budget would be in construction if it was approved?
Are you finished with your comments, sir?
Yeah, I was just, yes, yes, I am. That was my point.
Okay, thank you.
More lights, more lanes, everything.
Okay, thank you. This time the applicant has opportunity for a five-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jake Kramer again. I'm going to bring my experts up. We'll start with engineering. Thank you.
Good evening. Todd Ammon in 8515 Palm River Road, the engineer record for the project for Landmark Engineering. Just briefly regarding the utility issue, I'm not aware of any utility capacity issues in the area. We do have Hillsborough County aspels that show we have water, sewer, and reclaimed water lines adjacent to the site, and there's no intent for an interim wastewater treatment plant whatsoever. I'm here for any questions you have.
Thank you. Thanks.
Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa 33607. So we did conduct a traffic analysis for the project for the 127 townhomes, and that evaluated the access that would be necessary in any turn lanes that would be necessary for the project. In addition, as indicated, this proposed project, 127 townhomes, would be a significant decrease in traffic from what either would be the commercial or the multifamily, but a significant decrease. So the concern about traffic, this is the least impactful from a traffic standpoint. Thank you.
David Smith for the record. Just to clarify, the interim wastewater treatment plant, there will be no interim wastewater treatment plant. That is an old site plan condition that was from the 1989, and it has not been changed. Also, to note, the property is zoned PD. The only reference we were making is that there's a PD zoning that allows commercial at the corner, that this is a transitional issue, less intense project is what we're proposing, and the site design mitigates any adverse impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. Here to answer any other questions.
Thank you, commissioners. Again, Jake Kramer, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but this case tonight is about what are the options, right? The property owner has vested rights to connect to utilities. Property owner has vested rights to 110,000 square feet of commercial. And under, you know, the law that was taken out of our hands, they also have the opportunity to pursue Live Local and apartments on this site. We've engaged with the most affected neighborhood right next door, and they agree with us that townhomes, especially for sale townhomes, are a much better opportunity for this site than anything else. So with that, we'd ask for your support tonight. And again, our team is here if you have questions.
All right, thank you. Planning Commission.
Good evening, Alexis Myers, planning commission staff. The subject property is located in the residential one future land use category. The proposed major modification is running concurrently with HCCPA 2512, which proposes to amend the future land use designation to residential 12. The analysis provided throughout the staff report was based on the pending RES 12 future land use designation and urban service area expansion approval. It is located in the urban service area within the limits of the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. With the applicant's proposed condition of approval, revisions to site design, and additional transportation and pedestrian connections, the proposed use is consistent with the policy direction in the future land use section regarding neighborhood protection and compatibility. It should be noted that the added conditions and mitigation measures are essential to the planning commission staff's finding of consistent. Based upon those considerations, planning commission staffs find the proposed major modification consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the proposed conditions by Development Services Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master reviewed the proposed major modification to existing plan development, which is currently approved for 110,000 square feet of commercial land uses. The major modification request is to provide a second development option for the property to instead develop 127 townhomes. Three options are proposed to provide access. No waivers are requested. The ZHM noted that regarding traffic, the development of 127 townhomes instead of the approved commercial represents a decrease of more than 15,000 average daily vehicular trips. The development will be subject to all applicable regulations relating to drainage and stormwater retention. The zoning hearing master concluded that the property is currently permitted to develop 110,000 square feet of commercial development, which would likely change the character of the area to urban. The development of 127 townhomes serves as a transition in land uses between the residential subdivision to the west and the Veterans Expressway to the east. The zoning hearing master found that the proposed modification is compatible with the surrounding development pattern and consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and recommended approval.
All right, thank you. We'll go into board discussion. Commissioner Wostol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gormley, I hate to put you on the spot here, but this 110,000 square foot of commercial uses, on my way up the I-75 to Tennessee a couple of days ago, I noticed a disturbingly large adult supercenter. Could that be put on this location?
Depending on the type of sales, as I understand, there's establishments to exist, they would fall under an adult use classification, and I will just confirm that they may not meet the distance separation from residential uses, if you give me one...
No, that's okay. That's one saving grace for this piece of property. It's been mentioned a couple of times tonight that we should not consider Live Local on this property, which is unfortunately leading me to believe that the imminent threat that Live Local presents to the community is probably not being communicated effectively. However, from a comprehensive planning point of view, I must consider Live Local on the pretext of this application, especially considering the fact that the applicant themselves has entered it to the record multiple times this evening. The harsh reality of this piece of property is that despite very significant efforts from both myself, Commissioner Hagan, and the rest of the board over a year ago to thwart this property, that ultimately extremely angered the vulturesque multifamily developers from Miami enough to motivate them to sit in the seats that the audience is in right now and then approach the podium that you all spoke at this evening and softly threaten me because of the level of anger that they have for us thwarting their potential residential 35 unit per acre, which they will be absolutely able to get whether or not we approve this tonight or not. That is an absolute reality that almost certainly will happen if this is not granted tonight, and I can't be more clear about that. A residential 12 is one-third of the impact of a residential 35. Now, one of the speakers which I do sympathize with, and one of my dear friends lives on Thoroughbred Loop, and I have talked to extensively about this Comprehensive Plan Amendment, is that Live Local, the speaker mentioned, it's not here tonight, and it's not being heard tonight. There is no such thing as a hearing for Live Local. It's illegal for it to have to be required to go to a hearing. There will be no hearing. There will be no notice to the community. There will be no public hearings. There will just be four-to-five-story multifamily apartments, similar to the six-story apartments that have already been approved without this board's opinion or care on Apollo Beach Boulevard, which is going to decimate that community, in my opinion. This is really us just being put in an impossible position. Now, I do have one question that I don't want to reward this negative situation, is that the application says that they also hope to maintain the approved entitlements of up to 110,000 square feet. But then also, that same applicant said that the property owner wishes for this to be a townhome community. So I would like to clear up and have the applicant come to the podium and make clear that they are removing the addition of keeping the 110,000 square foot in trade for the townhomes if it's approved, to keep in spirit with the property owner that they themselves said this is their wishes.
Advocate, please answer the question.
Commissioners, maybe we have two minutes, please. It's a fundamental change in the application, so I just need to talk to the landowner for a moment about it.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Wostol, can you continue your comments?
Yes. And I also wanted to make the observation, as far as the utilities go, the piece of property adjacent to it outside of the urban service area already has public utilities. And we've made these exceptions for pieces of property that sit on the border of the urban service area in the past for them to be able to be entitled to hook up, because that urban service area line is only a planning tool. And we've since set radiuses or distances from that line to determine which would be an applicable one. And I am almost confident that in terms of the public utilities, that this would meet that newer requirement that we set forth. I believe it was like a quarter mile. I can't remember, Mr. Gormley.
Sir, this site does have existing lines right adjacent to it. It is allowed by the current zoning to connect, and in fact, required to connect. So this does have available utility lines. And I'll just note also that the Water Resources Department confirmed that the Van Dyke wastewater treatment facility does have available capacity.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, I would just say that while the applicant is conferring that, maybe if staff wants to clear up that all of the reasons that were ruled for denial by the multiple agencies tonight, would any single one of those reasonings be considered as a reason to deny a Live Local application? Or does Live Local override all of those reasonings for denial by the other agencies?
Yes, Commissioner, board members, that Live Local would not take into account any agency comments. They, by virtue of having planned development allowing for commercial uses, would have the right to proceed under the Live Local Act regardless... the right to proceed under the Live Local Act regardless of the agency comments. It is not the same, it is not a decision-making process like the rezoning. It is a right that's conferred by the, by the state law.
Yeah, I, I knew that. I just really wanted the audience to understand the extremely serious situation that we're left with on this property, but it looks like the applicant has a response.
Yes, sir, I do. Jake Kramer. Commissioner, unfortunately, we're not able to give up the, the commercial rights tonight. The reason is there's a contract on the property, and the condition of the property is that this option be in place at this time. So I can absolutely assure you, we wouldn't have spent a year in planning, working with the community, and, you know, a lot of money processing these applications if we didn't think that we can get townhomes built here, but just tonight on the spot, we're not able to do that because of that contract that's in place.
Well, then I'm left in a very uncomfortable position on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask a question to kind of, for clarification purposes and also to put it on the record, when the live local, when the applicant filed last year under LLA, they did so, and it was rejected based upon it being a PD, and that we had excluded, we were using that as an exclusionary, exclusion for not approving them. Is that correct, Mr. Gormly?
Ultimately, it was. They did proceed to get an affirmative zoning verification. They qualified under live local. When the board took the action to direct the amendment of the Land Development Code to clarify that planned developments were not eligible and declared zoning in progress, that stopped their, their application from being able to be considered. That has now, of course, changed where the state legislature has added planned developments explicitly as, as a qualifying project under, under, qualifying under live local, but yes, that they were, they were stopped at that time because of the board's action on clarifying the code relative to planned development zoning.
Right, so the changes from last year by our state legislature, not this board, but by the legislature in Tallahassee determined that they could include those PDs in there, and that now has allowed this to go through without our, as Commissioner Wustel brilliantly said earlier, we have no say in this.
That's correct.
And this is really picking the, the best of the worst in that case if they chose to go that route, and that's, we talked about one meter, Mr. Kramer talked about that, putting one meter in and putting 360-plus units versus 120-plus meters in. And that's essentially what we're doing here, because they can do all that now. They can hook up to the sewer, we have capacity. If not, they could put a dry line in, they could put the water in, we have capacity for that, and they can't get COs anyway until, if there was no capacity, because that would be one of those concurrency errors.
That's correct.
So, along with that, so, all that being said, we have really no say in, other than kind of diminishing the ability to kind of reduce the amount of traffic and what could possibly go there, whether it be a Super X, 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 whatever, or a Walmart, or a strip mall with 6 AM Scotts in it.
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
I thought that that analysis that Commissioners Wustel and Bowles just took us through explained the situation perfectly, and it is a horrible situation to be in, and it is, it is really a terrible position that local governments across this state have been put in. But the bottom line is, I, I heard the same thing from the audience, the comment that was made, live local is not in front of you tonight, live local will never come in front of us. If it goes the live local route, it will never come here for, for any discussion, or from any, for any review, or for any kind of bargaining to, to, to make this property and this development any more palatable to the neighborhood. And the idea of taking a, a bad gamble on how many, 455 apartments? Is that, is that the, the extrapolation of what could be done as of right with a live local application?
Yes, sir, that, that is, that they could develop this at 35 units per acre. Yes, sir.
Which comes up to 455 apartments.
453.
453. That, you know, that's, a victory here tonight is going, is going to leave that as, as the result, and I think that's not where we want to go. I, I think this is a terrible, terrible law, and now it's two sessions, because we used to have a little bit of a loophole with the PDs, and as soon as we identified it, it got closed by legislative fiat.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hearing both the pros and the cons, I'm going to move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Myers.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cohen. And I want to, first of all, I want to thank everyone who came down this evening and everyone who's participated in this process, not only this application, but also the previous request. I have a long history of protecting Keystone's pristine rural environment for over 20 years, going back to, I don't know if many of you remember this, but when the school district wanted to put a school at the corner of Gunn and Donneloo many years ago. So I've consistently stood with Keystone against intrusive development, including incompatible requests last year, when as Commissioner Wustel stated at his direction and mine, we enacted code and statutory changes to prevent the property from qualifying and to prevent the 336 units that were being requested at that point. As we've heard, the legislature had other ideas, reversed the law, which means a parcel's now eligible for affordable housing, rental properties, three stories, up to 453 apartments. That's simply the reality. I acknowledge it would be politically expedient to do so, but we cannot and should not consider this application in isolation. We have to look at the big picture. If this were a standalone request, and there was not, I'm just going to say it, a legal backdoor path to develop an extremely intense and intrusive apartment complex without this board's approval, that'd be one thing. Those are not the cards we're dealt. I think if live local did not apply here, the outcome would be different, but the legislature changed the rules at your expense. So I'm going to support the motion, and Commissioner Bowles, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. I would say that, at the very least, I live in Lutz as well, I don't live in Keystone, but just on the other side of the, the veteran wall there we have. And at the very least, I would like to say that I appreciate, and this is kind of a, I know I may get a groan in the crowd, but that the applicant chose to go with property owners versus property renters. I think that, that there's something to be said about that, and that, at the very least, we're looking at less trips, someone who's going to be vested in the community as a property owner, maybe not the same as the, the couple applicants that came before, but at the very least, we're not having transient families coming and going, and we're having affordable housing in this crazy market that we're in, that people can maybe have homes that they can actually live in and be proud to own. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so we got a motion on ordinance HCCPA 25-11. Please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now, can we have a final motion on Major Mod 25-0808?
Move to approve.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now, can we have a final motion on Major Mod 25-0808?
Move to approve.
Motion, Commissioner Myers.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, we'll adjourn the CPA public hearing and reconvene the Land Development Code Amendment public hearing. Welcome the first of two public hearings on proposed amendments to the county's Land Development Code. The board will vote on these proposed amendments following a second public hearing scheduled for November 13th. Development Services staff will now introduce the first item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Israel Monsanto, Development Services. We have three Land Development Code amendments. The first one is LDC 251224, Administrative Plaid Approvals. This amendment will modify the process to receive, review, process, and approve plaids in accordance with Section 177-071 of the Florida statutes. This statute was recently amended to provide that plaids or replays must be administratively approved, and no further action or approval of a county's governing body is required if the plat or replat complies with the requirements of Section 177-91 Florida statutes. This amendment will designate an administrative county official with authority to approve the plaids, and that concludes this presentation.
All right, thank you. No one signed, this is a public hearing, but no one signed up to speak to this item. I don't see any board comment, so can we go to the next item, please?
Next item, LDC 251225, Live Local Act Administrative Approval Online Use Restriction Agreement Process Update. This amendment modifies the Live Local Act requirements and standards for projects to qualify under the Live Local Act in the county, specifically updating the zoning requirements due to recent changes to Section 125-01-055 of the Florida statutes. It would update the zoning requirements, again, due to the recent change, and land to be developed under the Live Local Act is limited to parcel with the following standard zonings today. It's BPO, Business Professional Office, OR, Office Residential, CN, Commercial Neighborhood, CG, Commercial General, CI, Commercial Intensity or N Manufacturing. This amendment will specify that any other zoning district that is deemed eligible by the Live Local Act statute will also qualify for these projects. That concludes this presentation.
My, thank you. This is a public hearing, but again, no one has signed up to speak to this item. I don't see any commissioners' lights on, so please introduce the last item.
Last item, LDC 251435, Pickable Courts Locational Standards. This amendment will add regulations to new pickable courts in the county in order to mitigate noise impacts to nearby residential uses. A new construction of pickable courts or conversion of an existing use into a pickable court will be required to maintain a distance separation of no less than 250 feet from the structure or building envelope of residential uses. The review of pickable court facilities will require approval of a conditional use permit in accordance with LDC Part 1001-00, and this concludes this item.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. We have one individual that signed up, Robert, I don't want to mispronounce your name, so please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. Rob Biancari, a full-time resident of Andalusia subdivision and board member of a private HOA in Apollo Beach. In a previous meeting, you were presented with opinions from a California Hollywood actor who has moved to Florida soliciting manipulative fear and a few resonance regarding pickleball noise. It was eighth-grade theatrics culminating in a pong-pong-pong monotonous rant. Our California actor and company solicited Channel 8 news claiming that our small 200-home subdivision would become the quote-unquote pickleball noise capital of the world. They have attempted to persuade you by putting their thumb on the scales, claiming that our community veterans would be adversely impacted who have PTSD, and I'm here to set the record straight. I too am a veteran of two foreign combat tours with the 101st Airborne Division, and our neighborhood has a lot of veterans that I speak to regularly regarding this subject. Today, I'm speaking for myself. To say that two plastic wiffle balls mimic the sound of war from the jungles of Vietnam or the deserts of the Middle East is nothing short of delusional, in fact, perhaps better described as absurd. Isolation is what contributes to veterans taking their own lives, and team sports like pickleball and others provide refuge for veterans seeking others who understand. Well, how should we balance public good with private peace? Every new court is a public health investment. As chronic disease and inactivity rise nationwide, people staring at their phones, pickleball provides an affordable preventative health outlet with far-reaching benefits. I'm not going to dismiss noise as a valid, as a valid argument, but it's manageable. Our recent desktop consult with the sound engineer, the distance to homes predicted decibels between 60 and 62 without mitigation. For comparison, the conversation we're having right now is at 55. Acoustic barriers can reduce sound by 10 to 15 decibels. Quiet paddles and balls cut sharpness in half, and smart site planning and limited play hours protect nearby homes. Public parks, schools, playgrounds, swimming pools, basketball courts make noise too, but we accept them as essentials. Pickleball should be viewed through the same lens, a shared civic benefit requiring thoughtful management, not restriction. The county's 250-foot rule is a knee-jerk reaction to California nonsense. The county already has a noise nuisance ordinance. It's like having a street with a 25 mile per hour sign, and the county is now saying if you own a car that goes over 25 miles per hour, you can't drive on this road.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments, and thanks for your patience here this evening. Okay, don't see anyone in the queue. Again, we'll have a second public hearing when we'll consider these amendments. So with that, we are adjourned.